I'd like to welcome everybody else to our monthly land use hearing. Mac, if you're ready.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, thank you. Mac Carpenter for the Planning Department. We have several items on the agenda this morning and certain of those items we're going to request that you continue and/or table. If you'd like us to address those now.
I would. Continue or table?
Well, one's going to be tabled, the other's going to be continued as a group. And this is our quasi judicial item list this morning. Items number one and two, the Watersound North Camp Creek DRI amendment and the companion, Watersound North Camp Creek DRI PUD amendment, we're requesting to continue those to February 12th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Additionally, we are requesting that item number four, the Sunset Key Cottage just plat be tabled and it can be re-advertized once that plat is ready to be reviewed.
Motion to approve it being tabled.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the remaining items we're prepared to hear. The first item would be the Lakeview subdivision plat. It's a request to approve by final plat. It's been reviewed by Bob Barante.
Mac, before you get too far, I'm going to swear everybody in if that's okay.
Sure.
Anyone who anticipates speaking on any of today's agenda items, if you would stand to be sworn in at this time. So if you're going to speak on any of today's agenda items, if you would stand to be sworn in, all right. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you will provide to this board will be the truth? Thank you. Whenever you come forward, just state your name, say that you've been sworn in. Have any of the Commissioners had any ex parte communications on any of these items?
No.
Okay, seeing no, we're ready to go.
Thank you. Mac Carpenter for the Planning Department, C-A-R-P-E-N-T-E-R. First item for consideration is the Lakeview subdivision plat, request to approve by final plat. It's been reviewed by Bob Barante. It's submitted by Interlight Engineering Corporation on behalf of the Seaside Acquisition Group. They're requesting approval to plat 57, single family lots on approximately 19.72 acres with a future land use of small neighborhood. The project's located from the intersection of US 98 and US 331 East, four miles right on Thompson Road. And as you may recall, this project, which has been previously approved by development order, sits between the east side of Thompson Road and the west side of the Helen McCall Park. And as portion of this particular project, it includes a constructed multi-use path connecting to the multi-use path on Thompson Road and bridging the mosquito control ditch into the edge of our Helen McCall Park. And it provides a connection to 30A all the way to Helen McCall Park. So we're very proud of that particular improvement. The project meets the requirements for our Conference of Plan and Development Code in chapter 177. The applicant is here if you might have any questions for him.
David, do you have anything you'd like to add to that?
I'll be very brief. For the record, I'm David Smith with Interlight Engineering. And I was going to say the same thing. We've worked with staff, planning and public works to construct the bike path from Thompson Road to Helen McCall Park. And that's something we're proud of as well. So I did want to mention that. Thank you, Mac, for mentioning it. So I'm just really proud we were able to do that. So I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that you all may have.
Board have any questions for Mr. Smith? Seeing none?
Thank you.
Anybody from the audience? Seeing none? What's the board's wishes?
Motion to approve with staff conditions, to meet staff conditions.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Thank you, Commissioners. That moves to item number five on our list, the Alice Beach Phase Four Lots Z1 through Z9 and Z21 plat. This is a request to approve by final plat. It's been reviewed by Tim Brown. Submitted by Interlight Engineering on behalf of EBSCO Gulf Coast Development, Inc., requesting approval of the plat, 10 single family residential lots in Block Z on approximately 1.69 acre acres with a future land use of traditional neighborhood development. This plat is located within the Alice Beach development on the north side of County Road 30A. It meets the requirements for our Conference of Plan and Land Development Code in chapter 177. The applicant is also here if you have any questions for him.
David, are you the applicant for this representative? Do you have anything to add?
No, sir. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the board? Seeing none? What's the board's wishes?
Motion to approve with conditions.
Is there any public?
Do what?
Any public comment?
Ah, I'm sorry. Any public comment? Thank you, Dan.
Bit of a long night last night. I didn't even do that.
Seeing none?
Motion to approve with conditions.
Motion's approved. Do we have a second?
A second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passed.
Thank you, Commissioners. This moves us to item number six, the Alice Beach Block AA plat. This also is a request to approve by final plat. It's been reviewed by Tim Brown. This is a minor plat application submitted by Interlight Engineering on behalf of EBSCO Gulf Coast Development, requesting approval to plat eight, residential lots on approximately 1.22 acres with a future land use of traditional neighborhood development. The project is located on the south side of South McGee Drive, east of Sea Star Court, within the Alice Beach Planned Unit of Development. It has been approved by development order. It meets the requirements of our Conference of Plan and Land Development Code in chapter 177 of Florida statutes. The applicant is also here if you have any questions of him.
Again, David, do you have anything to add?
No, sir.
It's a big payday for you, isn't it? Does the board have any questions for the applicant? Any questions from the audience? Seeing none? What's the board's wishes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passed.
Thank you, Commissioners. This moves us to the, our final quasi judicial item this morning, item number seven on your agenda, the Beachside Estates plat. This is a request to approve by final plat. It has been reviewed by Bob Barante and previously approved by development order. This plat application is submitted by Emerald Coast Associates on behalf of CBHIV LLC, requesting approval to develop five lots, five units on four lots on approximately 3.11 acres with a future land use of neighborhood infill. The project's located south off Lakeview Drive at the end of Beachside Drive and is identified by the parcel number in your package. It meets the requirements of the Walton County Conference of Plan and Land Development Code and chapter 177 of Florida statutes. If you have any questions, the applicant is available for those.
Any questions for that? Any questions from the audience? Seeing none? What's the board's wishes?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Mr. Chairman, a point order. Mac, do you want these staff reports introduced?
Yes, sir. If we could introduce each one of those into evidence, thank you, sir.
Sorry.
Chairman.
And that concludes the quasi judicial portion of our meeting this morning.
We, so those are, those are the boards, Mac. I know we just got started, but I need to take a five-minute break to do some paperwork for planning. So if you need to go to the bathroom, get some water or something, we'll turn it back in five minutes. Welcome back. Thanks for your participation. Mac, are you ready?
Actually, I think Mr. Williams is the next presenter. We're moving to the two items continued from today's BCC meeting.
I think Mr. Jones is going to describe what we're doing. We're asking the board for a couple of things in permission. You want me to walk through it or are you going to take?
This, Mr. Williams?
Y'all don't let me go to the microphone very much. As a recovering politician, I'm shocked. We're doing it in a two-part fold. If you want me to give you a brief overview of the site, it's the, okay.
I'm shocked and you're letting me have that microphone.
Thank you, Commissioners. If you recall, our Tuesday meeting, we brought before you a proposal from Stone Clinical Laboratory, which would utilize some space in our Freeport Center as well as bring a number of jobs into the Freeport area. We were moving with somewhat haste to get there. Between Mr. Williams, Ms. Christman, and our other legal staff, they were able to get a contract, put together, get that contract vetted, get it to folks at Stone Lab and have it back signed. That contract contains the items that we discussed Tuesday. It is signed and before this morning for your consideration and approval. The second item will be if we move that initiative forward, we will need to enact a change order with Lord &amp; Son to begin the build-out of the facility that Stone Lab will use, that's in place and ready to go as well. So we're excited about this opportunity. We apologize that it's in very short order, but I believe between all of them on staff that have put eyes and hands on it, that it's in order and it will accomplish the things that we've discussed with you over the last couple of days about what it will do for the county. So we're here if you have any questions. Otherwise, we would entertain a motion to approve the contract as presented and that the Stone Labs folks have accepted and signed. And then the second motion would be to approve a change order with Lord &amp; Son in order to accommodate the build-out of those two units.
Make a motion that we allow the chairman to sign the contract with Stone Labs as Mr. Jones outlined.
Second.
Any discussion from the audience? Seeing none? Any more discussion from the board? We have a motion and a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passed.
Thank you. Based on that motion, the next request would be to approve a change order with Lord &amp; Son. That would begin the process of the interior build-out of the spaces, including that lease.
Just a quick, does this change order also include the tax collector's build-out as well?
No, sir. That's under a separate change order. And this, but the, the cost associated with this is on par with the per-square-footage cost that we paid throughout the whole building. So it's just a continuation of what we've been doing.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion from the audience? Bob?
Bob Ruckby, our OLE. Just a question, please, Mr. Chairman. Is this the same, the same Stone Labs that has an application in for the, for Triumph funding?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any more? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carried.
Just, if I might add, just to Bob's question, the moving forward and the actions taken today is not contingent upon their Stone Triumph application. They're ready to move forward absent that, if that be the case. We believe there will be other opportunities for them and so that's what they're looking at. Debbie, is that, you can just nod, you don't have to.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, moving on.
Yeah. So we need to adjourn this meeting?
Okay. I'm sorry, I forgot. All right, we'll adjourn this meeting and go into another meeting, okay? Now we're ready.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. This is the review committee meeting for our request for qualification 019-002 to provide professional transportation planning services and more specifically to prepare a mobility fee study and implementation plan as a replacement for our present system of managing traffic and currency and the mitigation that related to that on Walton County roadways. I would suggest that we take these presentations in person. I think both of the consultants are here with the teams as requested and I would suggest that we take them in alphabetical order. And the first of those firms would be New Urban Concepts.
Okay. I would like to state before we get started, we're going to give them 15 minutes each. Is that what the board wishes? Is that fine with y'all?
Yes, and I think we provided you the forms to evaluate each of the firms.
We've got, we've got.
And hopefully, if it be your pleasure, you can select one of these firms and we can begin negotiations for the requested services. Thanks, sir.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Jonathan Paul and I'm the principal of New Urban Concepts. And thank you for having us, giving us the opportunity today to present our qualifications. I've worked for 20 years in a variety of roles for local governments, serving as an impact fee and concurrency administrator for Alachua County, Sarasota County. With me is Ms. Debbie Danton, who's a professional engineer with over 30 years of experience, much of it within the northwest Florida area, and then Mr. Robert Schiffer, who is an expert in travel demand modeling. The proposal before you today is regarding a potential mobility plan and mobility fee for Walton County. And one of the ideas that the legislature in allowing local governments to pursue this is recognition that many communities were having trouble staying up with capacity. So you approve development, development generates traffic, you add more capacity. And it really got into transportation concurrency was, was accounting game. How many cars the new development have on the roadway and then how much do they have to pay? With that said, the legislature made a number of changes to Florida statute over the years and having been someone that works with local government and for local government, they've had a significant impact. The last changes were in 2013 when the legislature basically identified mobility plans and fees as a preferred way for local government to have development mitigate its impact. Increasingly, safety is becoming a major concern. The National Transportation Group yesterday just released a report called Dangerous by Design. And once again, Florida took eight of the top 10 most dangerous places in the country to be a pedestrian. So many local governments are looking to plan differently, to focus on how do you move people as opposed to necessarily how do you move cars and looking towards how do you safely accommodate all users of the transportation system. Back in 2006, I worked for Alachua County and it basically served as a genesis for mobility plans. At the time, the county commission was being sued by a developer who had denied a large-scale project. 1,200 residents came out in opposition. They took Santa Fe College's auditorium. In the same hearing after that, the commission had actually approved transit-oriented development and the residents sued the county for approving development because of too much traffic. So from that, the commission said, go to the state of Florida and figure out how do we get through this? They had us build the first Alachua, the first mobility plan in the state. And I've actually worked over the last several years putting those policies into effect, working on the Celebration Point development in Gainesville where we're actually building dedicated transit lanes for autonomous transit vehicles and building a million square feet of office, retail, and residential, all within a compact, walkable environment. So not only do I have experience in terms of implementing fees and plans, but also working with developers to actually build them. Two Pierre counties that have adopted mobility plans and fees are Osceola County and Sarasota County. Both of them have looked countywide at what their future needs were and replaced their concurrency systems with a mobility fee. Part of the New Urban Concepts philosophy, transportation concurrency today is really focused on how do you move a car or vehicle from point A to point B as quickly as possible? Mobility plans look at how do you move people, whether they're walking, biking, using a scooter, riding transit, but it's a more holistic approach of how do you get individual people around your community versus how do you necessarily just get cars? From that, a concept known as complete streets is really looking at how you handle all those modes of transportation. And increasingly, local governments are starting to look at new technologies. You're already starting to look at them on 30A with autonomous transit vehicles. There are a number of communities that are actually looking at providing a hybrid bike lane that accommodates electric scooters, bicycles, golf carts, and also autonomous transit vehicles. And even further than that is truly designing a transportation corridor that accommodates all modes. It's just an example of converting a four-lane roadway actually into two lanes. We have a protected lane for bicycles and scooters and you have another lane for small vehicles such as an autonomous transit vehicle or a golf cart. And I am working with a number of communities, the development of Celebration Point, working with the city of Gainesville to run autonomous transit vehicles on those dedicated lanes. I'm also working with several communities in southwest Florida to implement bicycle sharing and scooter sharing programs. Just one example on US 98 of what it could possibly look like. Taking the, the existing four-foot bike lane and looking at the existing travel lanes and saying, maybe we have an opportunity to narrow those lanes. Maybe there's an opportunity through this mobility plan process to talk to the state about allowing electric vehicles and other uses of the transportation system to use these type of facilities. Further on 30A, many communities throughout Florida are really recognizing the value of trails and economic development and both as a draw for tourism and also for accommodating travel within their community. And 30A has got an amazing system already out there today and this mobility plan is an opportunity to even further enhance that system out there. Our team has worked on a number of mobility plans and fees throughout Florida. Without getting into a whole lot of detail, there's robust and different as Miami Dade County and as small as Dade City north of Tampa. Miami Dade actually based their entire mobility plan on mode share goals of how many people do they want walking, biking, riding transit in the future? We actually developed a plan and fee based on that. Other communities have looked at how the individual people get around and identified the improvements to accommodate those. Any fee or plan has to meet what's known as a dual rational nexus test. Essentially, you have to show that there's a need, growth, your community is growing like the most of Florida, so that's a relatively straightforward process. The other component is the benefit. So any development that pays a fee has to receive some benefit from that, whether through a new roadway, wider trails, or some other type of facility. And then any other type of fee has to be related to the impact of an individual land use. I'm not going to go into a whole lot of detail, but there's some fairly complex methodologies that go into calculating fees. And given the unique circumstances, I'm going to let Mr. Rob Schiffer talk some about how we collect some of that data.
Thank you, Jonathan. We're lucky to be alive in this time when there's a lot more data available than ever before. I remember in the mid-'80s actually doing some work for Sand Destin and actually having to hand out postcards to people as they entered and exited the facility to find out what they're doing. Well, we have, we have a wealth of information we didn't have back in those days. First of all, from a trip generation, trip length standpoint, we have the National Household Travel Survey. The two most recent ones are listed here. The 2009 included a, an add-on sample in Florida, which I actually led that for FDOT. Then we have the more recent one. It doesn't include an add-on sample, but it still has data from throughout Florida and other states. Sense Transportation Planning Package, which has data on work trips only. A new release will be issued in March on that. Couple of these NCHRP studies that I led also that have information from a national perspective on trip rates and trip lengths, both in urban and rural contexts. Florida's been recently doing a lot of stuff to try and work on the tourist component. And so they've done a couple of recent studies that have looked at tourist travel and what sources of data are out there to get tourist information, both in terms of travel patterns and in terms of where these trips are happening. And then of course, it's EIT Trip Generation Handbook, which primarily looks at vehicle trips, but is trying to get into more information on, on person trips. Then here's the really exciting part, I think, which is the passive data sources that are out there right now. And I've, I've done a lot of work with, with these various sources throughout the country. And, you know, with, with smartphones, there's all kinds of stuff out there. Tracking cellular devices, GPS navigation data, location-based services. You know, you say, you check in somewhere, well, you know, you, we automatically have the information on where you checked in. We even have mode-specific location-based service data like bike ride apps and things like that. So we actually get into data for, you know, people who are riding a bike or walking. Magic Bluetooth devices, they have Bluetooth readers, they can position in different places to read signals as people are passing through. Wi-Fi data, you turn on your Wi-Fi hotspot automatically and boom, you know, there's information on where you're at. And, and then ad network derived data from advertising. And again, this stuff is very anonymous, so, you know, we don't know the specific individuals, but we do know the patterns of people and where they're coming to and from.
Thank you, Rob. And why that's important versus most other communities in Florida is you have a, you know, 30A is roughly 17 half-miles long and you have 25 miles roughly to the interstate from the beaches. So you have some fairly long trip lengths that occur within your community. And depending on how you structure a fee, if you charge development for the full length of that impact and didn't get into these different sources of data, you're going to have fees that are likely going to be cost prohibitive. I've worked in so many communities throughout Florida and if you don't really get into the fine-grained detail and you say, well, we're going to charge a developer to six lane all of 331A for 20 miles, well, then you're going to result in a fee that's $20,000, $30,000 per home. Your community is unique enough where you actually need to look at localized data, specialized data from these different sources because you have such a, you know, amazing environment, but also the tourism industry and some of the travel links. So to really get at what the individual impact of a land use is really requires us to dig deeper into the types of data available. And with that, that data is looking at, again, moving cars, not moving cars, moving people. So if you've seen some of these graphics before, cars use up a lot of space on the roadway. You start to introduce other modes and you start to transition to other means of travel and you start to make a much greater utilization of your transportation system. All the fees and plans that I work with all have a geographic component to them as well. So many times, they try to encourage infill development, they try to encourage mixed use, which this community has some of the, you know, premier mixed-use communities anywhere in Florida, and it's trying to recognize some of that internal capture, community capture that occurs when you both plan future improvements and to charge new fees. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Debbie. She's going to talk a little bit about some of the plans in the area, her knowledge of the community, and then we'll open it up to questions.
Good morning, Debbie Danton. I have 20 years of experience working in Walton County area. In 2007, I was actually with Genesis Group and project manager and updated the Walton County transportation concurrency system policies and procedures. County transportation concurrency system policies and procedures. Part of those procedures, we actually had a multimodal component in 30A, on 30A, allowing developers to actually do trade-offs and get credits for the proportionate fair share mitigation fees, so that they can actually implement projects more timely, which is actually happening today on like the Greenway Station, as well as maybe the Lakeside Project Building Trails and Transit Hubs. So also, in 2007, I was the project manager for the County Road 38 Traffic Study, which I actually have one extra copy if you'd like. And there's a lot of exciting things happening on 30A in particular, being you've got the workers that are being planned to transfer workers down 331. 331 fortunately has been widened and a nice evacuation facility, making things much safer, as well as all the accommodations being done by public works to accommodate additional trails. But I'm very excited to be part of this team. I've been working on transportation plans, traffic studies, traffic concurrency analyses, working on agreements with developers to do multimodal improvements in lieu of their transportation concurrency mitigation fees, and also doing public-private partnerships to either build new roads or retrofit roads to make them complete streets to be safer and serve multimodal traffic. And the team with New Urban Concepts, I mean Jonathan Paul and Rob Schiffer, I've worked with for twenty years, highly respected, very knowledgeable, and implement really plans that are actually implementable, not just a transportation fee that's going to be extremely high, but a multimodal aspect that will make your community much more flexible for implementing safety and mobility improvements for the future. And with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
In your handout that was turned in to... In your handout that was given to purchase in on this bid, there's a form in here that y'all put, I'd like for somebody to maybe explain it a little bit. It's the city of Altamont Springs Mobility Fee Overview.
Yes.
And explain the four different categories you got there and how you arrived at these particular numbers.
Well, and thank you for referencing that. What we wanted to do is really provide one example of communities that we've worked in, and to sort of show the factors that we go into in terms of both outreach to the community and explaining it to the elected officials. So in Altamont's instance, they had a comprehensive plan, and they had areas identified around the Sun Rail Station, which is basically known as a transit-oriented development area. They also had activity centers in their comprehensive plan, which were a mixture of retail, office, and residential uses. So what we did in terms of developing the fee itself right around the, and also caveat, Sanford or Seminole County has a one-cent infrastructure sales tax as well. So that helped to actually build some of the roadways, which is why the fee itself's likely lower than some other communities. But for the transit-oriented development area, we recognized the trip generation benefit of having a railroad right through that area, and so we gave the developers credit for that, which helped reduce the overall impact. We also, the counties or the cities comprehensive plan required a mixed-use development pattern and a gridded street network, so we also recognized that results in internal capture. The other category is activity centers, which includes a mixture of uses. So when you actually account upfront, and so as opposed to hiring myself or Ms. Danton, who also do work for private developers, to do a traffic study to demonstrate that has internal capture, you know, Seagrove or Seaside or Rosemary, any of those communities you know, where it has a mixture of office, has a mixture of retail, residential, people can make most of their trips internal to that. So the fee itself can be structured to recognize it upfront. So you don't actually have to go do a study to justify saying, we're mixed-use development. And part of that stems from having been an administrator for fifteen years. Nothing's more frustrating when somebody comes in, you've got a lot of things to do as a staff already, and says, I want to submit a traffic study to show I have a twenty-five percent internal capture for a mixed-use development, and your comprehensive plan says is going to have internal capture. Why not just recognize it upfront and simplify the process? And so those handouts that I provided are really useful when you go out to members of the public explaining what is it the community's doing. And it also helps to break down some of the rationale for it, and then gives a real broad overview of how you look at the individual impact of land uses and different areas and develop a fee accordingly.
Thank you. Anyone else? See you in a minute.
Do you have anything else to do?
No, ma'am. Commissioners, we thank you very much for your consideration, and we're again available for any questions you may have.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
The next firm will be Tyndall Oliver, and we're retrieving them from the lobby.
we have. You have extra time for that.
Can I get that thing moved up here? I'm an old man. Excuse me. Is, you going to leave a slide for me?
Yeah.
Okay. Good morning, I'm Steve Tyndall. I've got Neil Gergen Camp with Tyndall Oliver and Damian Miller. So I'll be very brief with the introduction, and we'll jump right into the presentation. We're going to go through introducing ourselves, a little bit of depth about our company and the depth and time, and we don't want to sit here and say we're the biggest, we're the best, but we're going to show you some details. We're going to do a background review. We do a profile of any community we're working with. I think you'll find it very interesting, because after that background review, then we'll start talking about the actual study. So given the introduction, we've worked with seventy-five communities all over the country, and we've worked in the state of Florida for the last thirty years doing this. So we have financial people, transportation people, roadway design people, urban design people, the whole, the whole package in one thing. This company was built for working for public agencies. This is a picture of our Florida work, thirty years, three decades, unbelievable experience in terms of doing exactly what your ask can be done today. This is our concurrency growth management. We started out in, working on it in eighty-five. We've seen every single different change in the laws, in the current laws, and the current ones being proposed, and there are some being proposed now. And we've testified in court cases dealing with growth management and transportation impact fees. The mobility plans, we've done forty-two communities throughout the Florida, and they're very well-integrated to the whole process for the communities. The organizational chart, I'll be the principal in charge, be involved in a lot of the public involvement in the presentations. Neil Gergen Camp will be the project manager, and Damian will specialize in the growth management and the mobility plan. The understanding of the project itself, you asked us about our understanding of public agencies. We're an individual firm that was started thirty years ago, and I'm an ex-public works director, and all we do is work for you, and we don't work for the private sector. This is our love. This is what we do. We're going to go through a little profile with you. We're going to talk about the county as a whole. We're going to talk about sub-areas of the county, what we've done in understanding, and how by sub-area then we can do plans rather than trying to do a plan for the county just in general. We're going to talk about then the actual using that into creating plans and mobility fees by area, and then the adoption process. So let's go through the background. This is a graphic of your growth rate versus the state of Florida. It's unbelievable. One, one-and-a-half percent growth rate is phenomenal. You've been averaging for three decades, three to four percent growth rate. That puts a burden on your base to absorb that. It's just amazing what you've been doing for thirty years, and to understand that when you're putting this together is very important. This is your permitting, showing those three to four percent. You've been issuing a thousand to twelve-hundred permits for thirty years. You've been doing it, and you've been doing it for a long time. I don't think I've ever seen any county in the state of Florida do what you've been doing in this community. This is the growth rate of the counties around you. Most of them are half percent, quarter percent negative, and you say you're three to four percent. And this is not only good for this area, this is good for the whole state in terms of your performance. This is the information related to the impact fees, and what we found is most communities, because we've got them all, that are growing between one and three percent have adopted impact fees. Communities that have not, don't have them. So it's kind of interesting that you're growing this fast, and impact fees is one of the tools to deal with growth rates themselves in terms of absorbing development. Basic information, the last three decades. Your employment, you've gone from fifty-five to eighteenth in the whole state. It's nice to know where you are, but it's nice to know where you've been and where you're headed and how you're performing. The next one is your income. You've gone from ranked fiftieth to ranked eighth in income per person in this county. Doing a great job in terms of the quality of development and what's happened in this county. Your wages, you've gone from well below average to almost average in terms of types of employees and wages that are, you're bringing in. The taxable value per capita, you've gone from the twenty, thirty range to the number two county in the state of Florida in terms of the taxable value per person you have, which is very productive for you. You've done an outstanding job. Your development types, you've gone from quite a mix of revenue to dominated by residential revenues. Your residential tax base in development is about eighty percent, and ninety percent of your tax base is coming from residential. One of the things we like to see is counties get to about eighty, twenty, and have a little better mix in terms of development types. Your sales tax per capita, again, from thirty-seventh to third in the state in terms of your sales tax. So you're doing something right there. The discretionary sales taxes is everybody that's adopted them. There is about half the counties that have adopted some form of discretionary sales tax. You haven't adopted that, and it's available, and we understand, you know, the basis for your decision with that. Gas tax is something you use. Get the state, I worked for an ex-governor, they got the state gas tax indexed, and your local gas tax is not indexed. And so your gas tax and value is cut in half over the last twenty years. It's not very useful because it's not indexed, and your miles per gallon is going up. This is a list of everybody in the county in terms of that revenue source. You've adopted that first option. A lot of the counties adopt the other one, but we noted if you adopted the point-three mils, which is equivalent to about eight pennies a gas tax. So you're sitting there almost average with an equivalent of fourteen cent a gas tax going, and that's a decision you're making, I'm sure, with your mileage and your gas tax as far as funding transportation. This is another outstanding one. This is the actual increase in your tax value, and you have in your note about tax increment financing. We've done tax increment for transportation for, I think, four counties. Very tricky, and you've got to be very careful. Your tax increment is sweeping everybody in terms of change because of your growth and value, but if you don't keep that up and you estimate your current tax increment and you over-commit to it over time and you transition back down to normal, then you're going to have a problem with taking tax increment and how you're committing it. Our financial people, Neil Gergen, can help you with your decision about using any tax increment to allocate to any one of your assets. So with the background review, we want to go to the sub-area in terms of the information. Are you going to take that and let me do it? I'll start it out and let him finish it. We found three areas of the county, your land use plan, the northern part, the central, and the southern part. Your mobility plan needs to be, you don't want to do the same things in the northern part of the county in terms of a mobility plan that you do by the beaches. Doesn't make sense, different worlds. The next graphic shows you the number of units. Eight hundred units before nineteen eighty, sixteen hundred, eight hundred and fifty. Before nineteen eighty, you were growing in the center part of the county. Look at the next two and a half decades. Everything's along the beaches. Unbelievable in terms of the actual development you're having and where it's occurring. So you've got the northern, the middle part, and the beaches. And the beaches is the gold mine, and I guess you know that. We just put in a simple, and we indexed it, an impact fee. If you had had it during that time period, you'd have collected almost a hundred and thirty million dollars of impact fees if you had charged during that time period. And look where most of it would have come from by sub-area. And impact fees have to be by area and prove benefit. So you're going to have an issue with you generate your development and how you do with mobility fees, and this is a perfect example of understanding the county as a whole and understanding the county in terms of the areas of the county. This is the affordable housing. You know the communities is tough. Your southern part of the county is four times the value per home in terms of the just value in your income revenues, and understanding that in terms of anything with tax increment or a special area financing. With that, we'll go through the project approach. And again, you'll see the project approach is going to be kind of county-wide consideration, and the project approach will be by sub-area.
Thanks, Steve. Talk about the concurrency and development review stuff a little bit. Concurrent being specific to timing and location and phase in development, really better addressing larger-scale development than smaller piecemeal development. And this is something that over two thousand and five through about twenty-eleven has been limited by Florida statute, and so the ability to really stop development with concurrency is not there anymore. Much more important to think about this at the land use planning level than at the site plan or at the zoning level. But there are still some considerations for large-scale projects and maybe specific planning areas where you know you have deficiencies. We've worked with a lot of communities to tailor that, so we don't have a one-size-fits-all approach, but we can go in and from a development review perspective, regulatory perspective, manage that process to help you meet your goals. In terms of the mobility plan itself, we're looking at existing conditions, goals, service standards, performance measures, and then prioritized recommendations. And again, just looking at where your growth has been, but also where your potential is. You're not done developing, and so that can create some real burdens on your infrastructure. We look at this in terms of sort of different types of the county, rural, suburban, more urban places. Where rural, when we start talking about multimodal, it's more about safety. It's getting people where they can safely walk down the side of the road, dealing with lane departure crashes. Safety engineering is a big part of what we do as a firm, and so we can take that approach to dealing with the investment in the more rural parts of the county. Suburban, now we need to think about bottlenecks, but a lot of your capacity there is probably in the state highway system, so coordinating with them, making sure that we're looking at where the federal money can be allocated. And then along that more urban area, along the beaches, really thinking about traffic circulation. And in those areas, the alternative modes, the transit, biking, walking, actually become part of your capacity, not just an amenity or a safety feature. So we would look at it that way and then really try to tailor our approach to each of those zones differently to make sure that we're addressing the needs in that area. So just an example, you know, rural highway, we may be talking about adding paved shoulder. This is also a place where somebody can ride a bike or can walk, but fundamentally, it's a safety feature for the roadway. As we come into the midpoint, probably not a lot of pedestrians, but you want a sidewalk to make that safe. There may be critical intersections we need to identify and improve, looking at volume and level of service, turn lanes, things of that nature. And then you asked us to talk a little bit about County Road 30A, and this is something where you've got one road trying to do a lot of different things, a lot of different character sections going from sort of undeveloped parkland, you know, down into some pretty dense communities. We looked at some feedback from the trail, and you've got a mix of users. You've got people walking and strolling, taking their time, and then folks that want to go put in ten miles, and there's a conflict between those groups. And so just as an example of how we might approach some of these things, this is an existing cross-section above and, you know, part of the community there, and you've got, you're trying to fit everything in, maybe too much space for parking and not enough space for people to ride their bike. And so we would look at ways to reallocate that. In-house, we have a roadway design group that's familiar with both, you know, what you can... In-house, we have a roadway design group that's familiar with both, you know, what you can do on a county road system, but also what we can do on a state highway system. And so when we bring these ideas to you, they're gonna be valid and implementable, not, not pie in the sky. Moving to mobility fees? Oh, I'm sorry, my name is Demian Miller. Thank you.
Negan Ken. So the mobility fee itself will be, will sort of follow the structure set up with the development strategies and your development review process. So it will be consistent with that, and it may have the similar fee variations by area, by use, depending on the county's economic growth management goals. And then the technical calculations are pretty much governed by the state legislation and the case law, and they typically have a cost, credit, and demand components, and it's supposed to reflect the cost of providing that sort of infrastructure and recognize any future contributions in terms of other taxes from future development. And then the demand is, of course, measured in terms of travel. It's either the vehicle miles of travel or person miles of travel, depending on what you're doing. So the nice thing about having the mobility fee, there, there are two components. One, it, it gives you the flexibility in terms of the use of revenues. You don't have to use it only on roadway additions or capacity, but also you can do it on standalone sidewalk, bike lane, and so on. And in terms of dollar amount, of course, you can get a lot more of sidewalk projects for equivalent of building one mile of roadway. So there's some advantages that way. And then the other part, again, mobility fee in the state legislation has some implications on your concurrency and development review. So that's the other component that we discussed a little bit prior to that.
I'll try to wrap it up real quick. I used to be in your seat and listen to developers. I mean, people, and they would tell, why select us, they wouldn't match what they presented. What I wanna do is just highlight what we presented about why select us. We think that we've got the energy, the enthusiasm, and the staff, and the experience. Expert testimony and everything else you want in terms of that, and we showed you that in terms of the introduction. We think we take that background review and all your documents, and we integrate them in, your land development code, your comp plan, et cetera, like no one else could do. Because we do physical analysis, engineering, planning, the whole process. And knowing area-wide versus the, the county as a whole. We've got a project approach we've used and implemented more than anybody else in the state with successful outcomes. And to summarize, our clients say we have unbelievable institutional knowledge because of our thirty years and our profiles. We have the insight. We'll use this technique in our workshops with you, and our public involvements as we go through at the same time with graphics and charts integration, and the final asset, the, the outcome will be what you're looking for.
Any questions? No. Okay, thank you very much.
So I think if we want, we could take a minute or two for you guys to score. And then after that, we can take public comment.
Okay.
Would you like to take public comment first?
I'd kinda like to do the public comment.
Public comment works for me.
The question I have, Councilor, maybe Mac. We score these guys out, and based upon those scores collectively, we will, it'll be selected as the firm. Right?
Yes, sir.
And then the next step would be negotiation phases with them concerning the contract. Have we even put a draft contract together yet?
No, sir, we haven't. We have a draft scope, yes.
Okay.
That was included.
Okay.
But, but they are not presenting fee proposals at this time, but that would be part of that negotiation.
So the top-ranked firm, we would then negotiate with, and bring you back a contract. And if we fail to negotiate terms that are acceptable, then we can go from there.
Any questions from the audience?
Bob Brook, B-R-O-O-K-E. I'm, I'm assuming that the commissioners have a lot more data, excuse me, in the, in the written proposals or submissions than was presented here. One of the things that I, I didn't hear either of the presenters discuss was the timeframes they're looking at. I mean, I think we all recognize we have a problem now that we're, especially during this, the tourist season, Thirty A is overutilized. They didn't talk about that. They didn't talk about, are they looking out for what the traffic solutions will be for a period up to fifteen years from now, twenty years from now, five years from now, whether you're solving today's problems or future problems? So I, I just recommend you take a look at that as you review the proposals. The data, the data, I think, is critical in, in assessing what the future growth is gonna be. I didn't really see growth projections, but I think that's a key ought to look at, is are they competent to do the growth, the growth projections? And I didn't see anybody talking about anything regarding modeling and simulation, which seems to me to be a tool that people use in these kinds of things when they look at projections. So I'm just making the offer, not having access to what is in the proposals, but that you look at those sorts of things, or hopefully you have when you've reviewed the proposals. Thank you.
All of the commissioners received the proposals that were submitted to purchasing and reviewed them prior to today's meeting.
Just for a point of clarification, the land use plan that we have prepared that is part of the comprehensive plan that was, the future land use settlement that was adopted on December eleventh and subsequently challenged by the South Walton Community Council is critical, and that would be a basis, or at least a large part of the basis, for this particular study. And based on that challenge, that may not be resolved until August. So this schedule will absolutely be impacted by that challenge, and it will delay completing the mobility fee study. But that would be part of the negotiation with the consultant. I just wanted to make you aware of that.
Okay, anybody else?
Can they have a, can they proceed on the? You're not saying we can't start?
Well, unfortunately, until that, those issues are resolved, it's gonna, because we don't know how they're gonna be resolved yet. So that is gonna cause some delay. But we do wanna go ahead with this process and make sure we have the consultant lined up. So whenever we do get that resolved, we can move quickly.
I think there is a, a portion of the work that could be started while we're resolving this particular challenge, but it will impact the schedule.
Mr. Lyles?
Thank you, commissioners. I'm Jay Lyles, I'm here on behalf of the Seaside Institute. And I wanna thank you all publicly for taking this really important first step, among many others, that you have taken to focus on these transportation needs. So we are here to help in any way we can, and regardless of the timing, we agree, we hope that you're able to begin the process sooner rather than later. Thank you again for everything you're doing to work on Walton County's transportation needs.
So is that included in public comments?
Yeah. Anybody else? Okay, that, that concludes, give us a few minutes to grade these.
Who are we gonna have count them up?
Kim.
Kim? Okay.
Yeah, have everybody signed their, their form?
I put an X, is that all right?
Mr. Chairman? While we're waiting on Kim to finish up, I wanna personally thank both firms for participating and reaching out and, and for their presentations this morning.
I, as well, I thought both of them were evidently qualified. Very, it was very tough to choose.
I want this.
It would drive me crazy in there.
Yes, so the, they can, Mac, if you want, you can let him know that we're ready to announce the scores now. Okay. All right, so we're ready to announce the scores. For Commissioner Anderson, he scored New Urban Concepts at a hundred and Tyndall Oliver at ninety-nine. Commissioner Chapman, New Urban Concepts at ninety-seven, Tyndall Oliver at one hundred. Commissioner Glidewell, New Urban Concepts eighty-five, Tyndall Oliver eighty-six. Commissioner Nick, New Urban Concepts eighty-three, Tyndall Oliver eighty-five. Commissioner Nipper, New Urban Concepts one hundred, Tyndall Oliver ninety. That has the total scores, New Urban Concepts four hundred and sixty-five, Tyndall Oliver four hundred and sixty. So New Urban Concepts was the highest-ranked firm. At now, we would need a motion to enter into negotiations with New Urban Concepts.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion of the board? Any discussion of the audience? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say aye.
Okay, that concludes our business.
Okay, we are adjourned.